Everyone, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I have 6:01. And can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patino.
Here.
David Florio.
Yeah.
Luke Murray.
Here.
James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Levis.
Here.
Don Coward.
Here.
Harold Sands.
All right, thank you. So could we have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Madam Chair, make motion to go into executive session.
I have 6:02, is there a, thank you, Luke. Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patino.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four to zero. So we will meet in executive session and be back after we meet for those attendees that will be waiting for us. It looks like we should be starting back again at 6:45. So let us go off to executive session. Is everybody here? Yes, right? Okay, I'd like to reconvene the open session of the Coventry School Committee. I have 6:55. And could we start with a moment of silence before the, before the work for tonight? Thank you. And I believe, Mr. Florio, it's your turn to read the mission for Coventry Public Schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The mission of the Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students, an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you so much. So just to inform the public, the school committee met an executive session starting at 6 o'clock, and we met for a little less than an hour. We considered, we voted to approve our executive session minutes on 3/25/2021, and that vote was four to zero. And we also talked about the school-related contract, collective bargaining contract. No votes were taken in that area. So that being said, could we have a vote to seal the minutes of our executive session?
Madam Chair, I make the motion that the records of the executive session be kept closed pursuant to sections 42-46-4 and 42-46-5.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Luke. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patino.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four to zero. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patino.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four to zero. Moving on to the public agenda, for those attendees attending our meeting this evening, all the following agenda items are open for discussion. Comments can be made from the attendees. All you have to do is raise your hand, and you'll be brought in. If we have a vote on any particular item, you will, before we actually call for a roll vote, you will be allowed to give a comment and ask any question before I actually call for the vote. So that being said, we can move to agenda item number six, which is the discussion of the FY22 budget. And I assume, Mr. Levis, you want to start this?
Correct, thank you. So tonight, we're going to talk about, we wanted to have this meeting, and I mentioned before, to really, on the budget aspect, to go over personnel. And afterwards, we're going to talk about a COVID budget that we've discussed. We're going to present a COVID budget to you with funds that we know we're going to have, and we'll discuss that with the committee, and I'm going to, you know, ask them to vote on a number, not the entire COVID budget. And I think what's important to know is next week, we're going to come back together and pull it all together with the FY22 budget, showing you where the personnel will go into place. And, you know, in something we've talked about, and Mr. Sands and I talked about, I think what's important to know is that how we plan on attacking the structural deficit over the next couple of years. And there'll be a presentation just on the structural deficit, because I think that's important for not only the committee who has oversight of our budget, but for the community to understand. You know, so we also have the capital list that we had shared with the committee with photos in the priorities that we have shared. I know Mr. Pearson had brought that up at our joint meeting, and, you know, we had shared that with the interim town manager. So hopefully, the council has that also, and I know the planning, Mr. Crossman has that. So anyways, back, you know, with the FY22 budget, I'm going to have Mr. Coward facilitate the personnel. We've met with all of our administrators, different department directors, and the list that we shared with you tonight is a revised list in terms of, there's two components. There's personnel we need based on enrollment at the high school. It comes down to the numbers of students requesting, requiring a program. Even if we cut a certain program, there's X number of students. We need to have places for students to go, and that's always the challenge, you know. Miss Bowden, Donna Bowden is phenomenal, and I don't want to take away from her to the high school, but she does an incredible job scheduling, making things work. It's more than one person should do, but she does an incredible job, you know, with the support of the guidance and administrators. So we're going to talk about in the elementary school, it's how many grade ones you need in a school, how many grade two. You know, kindergarten registration is kind of challenging, because sometimes, you know, we've been able to say, we might be able to reduce two kindergarten classes, you know, from our numbers based, you know, in May, but then we find in the summer registration, we have to put two different ones on. So, and we know with the middle school, and something we'll be talking about tonight is, and I'm proud to say it's taken a couple of years, but we've been able to, they've been able to revise the administration and the union leadership at the, at the future leadership at the middle school have worked hard on a schedule that keeps the focus on students, but also supports our teachers and the work that they need to do. And there's been requirements. So we're going to look at the enrollment part of personnel, but also the other piece is, this is a year where we need to take massive action to create momentum, and you're going to see personnel that we believe we need to, to provide consistency, provide evidence-based practices, targeted instruction to students, to address learning loss and social-emotional needs. Said a lot there, but I'm going to, that was Don giving you time to prepare, so.
So, Mr. Levis, do you want me to share my screen? Is Mr. Murphy going to do it? How do we want to handle this part of it?
You're the boss.
All right, I'm going to share my screen. Well, somebody just let me know when you see it.
It's there.
Yeah.
Okay, so. So I want to orient you to the document before I get too far into what's being said in each column. So we did a worksheet for each school, then we did one with special education, and we did one with facilities with Jason Martin. The way we handled these meetings, it was myself, Mr. Levis, Mrs. Card in HR, a special education director or two, depending on the level, and then the principal or principals, depending on which school, at each school, to kind of discuss what they thought they needed for personnel, based on what they had told Sarah upfront, but also based on, you know, some things that had come up along the way. So in the first column, we just put the name of the school. It's a plus or minus, what the position is, the number of positions, the FTEs or hours, depending on the job, the reason why we're looking to put that position in place. And then we ranked everything as sort of being high, medium, or low in terms of urgency. You'll see on this document, we wiped out all the lows, and we just kept the highs and some mediums on there. And then in the last column, we put some notes about where the funding source would potentially be. So anywhere you see COVID funding, that's a position that we're looking to use the money that the federal government is providing to fund the position. Anywhere you don't see federal COVID funding, that is a position that is going to land on our local budget. So the next thing I'll say, in almost every single school, positions that you see being added in are positions, many of them are positions that had been eliminated over the years, and that principals felt were important to come back. And so, kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Levis just said, many of these positions are very specific in terms of targeting learning loss with students in tier one, tier two, and tier three. So I don't know if I'll read every single word, but if you look at Feinstein, this, this, this school has a number of positions, and some of those positions are a result of a new schedule that I think we discussed at a prior meeting that is being built out at the middle school. And creating that schedule, we needed to add some positions. And the positions that we added, for now, we're calling ramp-up positions. The ramp-up positions are focusing on reading and math for students who are below level, and we're calling it almost like a double dose. It's not necessarily an intervention, it's a double dose of math. So they would have regular math class, and then they would have an additional math class to help them catch up with their academics. Same thing with English Language Arts. And if you notice, those two positions are not in the federal COVID funding category, because those positions are crucial to keeping that schedule working, and we cannot have a situation where one, two, three years down the line, that position is being eliminated because the funding source goes away. We want those positions to stay in so that the schedule stays. One thing we all agreed upon was the Feinstein schedule needed to change, but it also needed to stay in place for a number of years. They've had schedule changes, way too many schedule changes over the last number of years. So you'll see that, you'll see intervention positions. Currently, Feinstein has no intervention for math, so they'll have one. Currently, they have one reading position, so we're going to add another. There is a special education position that's due to enrollment and adding a teacher to a team and a teacher assistant. The other thing I was going to talk about is building subs. We put building subs in every single school. This year, we use building subs differently than we had in the past. We have more building subs available to our buildings every single day. And when you're shorthanded on getting substitute teachers, the building subs become crucial in covering classrooms. So we look at that from the angle of learning loss as well, because when you don't have a teacher in a classroom, and you have to cover that classroom with either another teacher during their prep, or you have to divide those kids up and spread them across a number of other classrooms, what ends up happening is you're making the academic flow disrupted, and students are not going to be able to stay where they need to be. So we're looking to fund those with the federal dollars as well. And then at the very bottom, there's a specialized program at Feinstein that is, got some increased enrollment, and so we need to add a teacher assistant for that. What I'm going to do is go through each one of them, but we have all the principals online. So at the end, if you have a specific question about a specific school, we can pull the principal into the presentation to answer questions that I can't answer. And since I can't see anybody, I'm just going to go to the next school. Coventry High School, this is a process we go through with them every single year. They open up in January, allowing students to begin selecting courses for the following year. And then we look at what students have selected, where the enrollment is, and we identify classes that can be closed and classes that need to be added. So you'll see, the yellow represents minuses, those are courses that are classes that are going to be reduced. And then the pink, just like in the previous slide, are classes that we're adding. All of the ones below the first two are a result of student enrollment and requests in terms of programming. I will call out the fact that at the bottom, CTE programs, culinary careers, computer IT, all seeing increases, more, more of our kids are attending those courses, so it required more teaching time. The top two, the first one is called Vision of the Graduate, and the second one, obviously, is the Guidance Counselor position. And they're looking for a .4 Vision of the Graduate and a .5 Guidance Counselor. In the past, they had a PBGR Coordinator position that Mrs. May Cumber spoke about last year, and we eliminated. And it was a very important position to that building. And this year, we do, we've done so much work, and the school committee has seen a number of presentations about the Vision of the Graduate, that we felt it was important, and we agree with the high school team, that to have somebody ultimately be responsible for the Vision of the Graduate and the initiative will allow it to keep going and being successful. If there's no one person that sits with that responsibility, you know, some of the momentum gets disrupted, and things don't get done the way they should be done. And then the Guidance Counselor position's a .5. Over the years, we've been shorthanded in the Guidance Department. NEASC even recommended that we increase Guidance Counselors, so the caseloads are no higher than 300. And right now, our caseloads are much higher than that. Going to Washington Oak School, you'll see the building subs, just like before. We are putting one for the rest of the building, and then we have one dedicated to just pre-K. We also have to add itinerant time to cover some pre-K prep. And then there's increased speech time and increased reading intervention, .5. So we increased reading intervention in Washington Oak and Black Rock and Western Coventry, and we increased math intervention at Washington Oak, pardon me, math intervention at Western Coventry, Black Rock, Hopkins Hill, and Tai Oak, specifically targeting learning loss and supporting kids in tier two and tier three. Black Rock, math intervention, like I just spoke about, reading intervention, like I spoke about. We're watching two classrooms, two grade levels, where there could be, right now, there's a low enrollment, and there's a potential that we could close one section of a grade-level class. So if they're carrying three third grades, we could potentially go down to two if the enrollment does not increase. So right now, we're watching that closely, same thing with first. And I spoke previously about building subs in all the buildings. Special education, Mr. Sands is going to talk about this more later on. But in the past, when we needed nurses and we couldn't get nurse subs, we have to call agencies. And sometimes, we call a lot of agencies to find a nurse, because they're very hard to come by. And when we have an agency nurse come in to cover, it's, we're paying top dollar, because we're paying for the nurse, we're paying for the agency fee, we're paying for, we're paying for significantly, significantly more money than we pay nurses that are nurses. So we're looking to create floater nurse positions, so that we'd have people available to cover buildings, to back up the bigger buildings. And if we need a nurse for a field trip or any kind of a situation, instead of calling an agency, we would have people on hand. It's the same philosophy, the same thinking as having a building sub, having our own people available to do that work, people that work for the school department, that are people that are dedicated to us, makes it a lot easier for us to keep everything full and flowing. When we don't have the people, and we're shorthanded, it creates very difficult situations. Hopkins Hill, looking for a building sub and a .5 intervention position. And Western Coventry, they have a few specialized programs. They have a Strive program, where they're looking for a teacher assistant. We're looking at a .5 reading, we're looking for an increase in speech. That's due to student caseloads, increase in occupational therapy, increase in student caseload, math intervention .5, like I mentioned earlier, and building sub, like I mentioned earlier. So you will, you will notice that I'm kind of repeating myself quite a bit, because we try to be equitable, and make sure that if we gave something to a school, that we try to be consistent, so that all the kids in all the schools would have access to a high level of support. And then Tai Oak School, you'll see two yellow lines, those represent the positions that could be decreased based on enrollment. You'll see a first grade increase. So what that basically means is, when you see the second grade decrease and the first grade increase, that means a group of kids, a cohort worth of kids, are moving up from one grade level to the next. And when they move up to the next grade level, we decrease a teacher, but the next group coming up behind them may require us to add a teacher back in. So it's us kind of making sure that we have the right number of teachers for the number of students at each grade level on a given year, that we see a math intervention position, and we see a building sub position. And then finally, in facilities, and Mr. Sands will talk about this as well, you'll see a number of positions, this is what we have currently, supporting our buildings in terms of keeping them clean. I will say that I was on a EDOC call, Mr. Sands was on it as well, and the state RITO, they're still emphasizing a lot of the cleaning protocols that we've been doing all year long, and they don't anticipate those protocols going away. And if we want to maintain clean buildings to keep kids in school, we need to have the staffing to do so. The only last thing I'll say, and I know Mr. Sands will get into this as well, is, you know, we recognize that any position being funded with the COVID funding is contingent on those federal dollars. So we'll have to watch those positions over the next year or two to see the impact on student learning. And then as, as time goes by, and we're able to measure that impact and bring the results back to the committee, then we can talk about, you know, which positions would stay in the budget, and which positions we try to move over to local, or try to creatively fund a different way. Before I stop sharing, is there any questions specific to the table that I'm sharing?
Okay. I had one, I had one question, Don. The, the change in schedule at the middle school, you said, was like in the work sort of thing. And I know that our test scores in the middle school have been an issue. So I assume that this new schedule is sort of like using the data analysis of our, of our achievement scores to try to figure out a better way of closing that gap?
So I, you know, it's a great question. I actually have a short presentation that the middle school administration had put together, that I have kind of like sitting here on my back pocket, if I needed to pull it up. I didn't want to tie up the presentation with just that, but if you want me to, I'll pull it up, but I can answer the question directly. We had a number of things that the school department recognized that we needed to do at the middle school to improve academic achievement, but also social-emotional and just the general function of the building. The, the, the school staff and administration has needs that needed to be addressed, and of course, there are student needs. So what we did is, we put together a team, and it was a school-based team led by two teachers with administrators, and then at the end of the process, myself, Mrs. Aaronakis, Mr. Levis, a number of other people came in and went through their, their plan. And I think, if I'm, I could be wrong, but I think they're also either have shared it or plan on sharing it with the rest of their staff already. But one of the, one of the asks was to increase instructional time in the content area. So we got more minutes for instruction in ELA, in math, in science, and social studies, because when you switch over to new curriculum, almost all the new curriculums, the highly-rated curriculums that are out there, require increased instructional time. And we didn't have enough instructional time in that schedule. So it was very important for us to increase that time. The other things that we did, and I think they're big wins for everybody, is there's going to be a much more robust world language program at the middle schools. There's going to be computer science at the middle school. And then like when I showed you the slide, we have these ramp-up positions that we're putting in place that are going to support our struggling learners. And then on top of that, we have interventions that are going to be really focusing on your tier three kids, the kids who are multiple years behind, who need like one-on-one, one-on-two, one-on-three instruction, pretty much, you know, if not daily, every other day. So I think, to answer your question, the way this, the schedule got built out, it absolutely addresses learning loss, but addresses core instructional time and minutes in a really great way.
Great, thank you. Thank you, I was kind of curious and hoping for that answer. Are there any questions, Mr. Florio, for Mr. Coward?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just had to use the restroom.
You don't have to, you don't have to explain.
Okay.
Mr. Murray, do you have anything for Mr. Coward?
No, I mean, thanks for the synopsis, I mean, it's a lot to take in, because there's a lot of positions here and what everyone does. Likely to have questions, but I need to synthesize this just a little bit more, so, but I appreciate the presentation.
And I, and I do want to reiterate, Mr. Murray, it was a big lift for the department. You know, this was something that Mrs. Manjorelli started that we continued, where we pulled all the players into one meeting and really went over everything. Special education sitting there, regular ed, administrator, just going through everything to make sure that we're getting the right, right things in place to make sure that, you know, students continue to, you know, have academic success.
No, it's good, and I think with all the curriculum that we have going on, and modifications and schedules, and it's part of our, it's a piece of a larger equation, right? So I get that, and that's, that's where I want to, in my mind, tie it in, but I, I mean, from, from what I'm looking at, it all makes sense, but, you know, like I said, I want a little more time to think through.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And finally, Mr. Pearson, anything?
Just as a reminder for everyone, if you said it, and I apologize for missing it. We have federal COVID funds going to support positions. How long are those? Just, just a reminder for everyone here and listening in, how long are those funds going to be available for those types of positions?
So, so, September 30th of 2023 is when we have to utilize all those funds. So you're absolutely right, I think we're going to talk the next component. You know, I'll, I'll start it, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sands, but we have to be strategic in terms of, and Mr. Murray had talked about it too, and Mr. Coward, how we're going to look at these positions. And, you know, we'll talk, and I think that's the, the presentation that, after the budget, next school committee meeting, where Mr. Sands will really get into, okay, the structural deficit piece, because, and again, we, we'll talk a little bit about in the next section, but I think that's, looking at the big picture, how we utilize these funds to improve student performance, to address the needs we have in our buildings, but also to attack that structural deficit is going to be, even though we're focused on right here and now in FY22, it's going to be a two-year plan, less than two years. And we have some ideas, and we're obviously going to share them with you, and, like I said, it'll be over several meetings, I think we're going to discuss the COVID funds, but how are we going to use them strategically?
Yeah, and our, our approach has been very strategic and almost surgical, because in the past, when federal funds came, and people were worried about structural deficit, they used a lot of the funds to buy technology, or buy programs, or, or things of that nature, because they knew it would not impact their, their budget long-term. But what ended up happening is, they purchased things that had a shelf life of one, two, three years, that soon after the federal dollars were gone, they almost had no more impact on student learning. A lot of them ended up being, you know, discarded. We were thinking, what's better in a short term to have, what, there's nothing better than to have students have more instructional time with a highly qualified professional, teaching them, you know, their content. And, and we thought, let's do that. Let's be really, really surgical and strategic, and give kids as much instructional time with a teacher as we possibly can. Now, we'll be buying books, and we'll be buying other technologies, and there'll be things that we buy along the way, and we're going to fund summer programs and things of that nature. And at some point, we'll come back and talk about that. But for us, we were thinking, we want to have as much time in front of a teacher as we possibly can, so that students can catch up, hopefully get back to where they were, and what would we, nothing would be better than to take them further, and to really start, you know, bend in and curve a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Levis, I think we've asked our questions, so who's on next? Mr. Sands, I guess.
Well, I think we're, no, I think he's going to come on when we do the other component. I don't, I, and again, I'm not, if Mr. Sands wants to speak, he's more than welcome to. But I also know we have the, if there's more questions about the capitalist too.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, but again, I don't want to, because then we're going to talk about separately the, as Mr. Pearson talked about, the COVID funds, and go a little bit more depth about those funds positions and how we plan on utilizing a certain amount right now.
Hey, so, I know we all had it in our pack at the. Hey, so, um, I know we all had it in our packet, the capital, capital needs and all the photos. So did anyone have any questions about that? I think it was pretty straightforward. Mr. Florio, did you have any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair. Very straightforward. I think the planning commission, when they look at this, if they have already, I'm sure they'll pass it on to the council.
Well, thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Murray, anything?
I, I do have a couple. So one of the things that we brought up in the past, we constantly bring up is the Jacobs report. And also the stage one that we've already done. And, and, and looking at the capital list, you know, I'm looking at aggregate 14 to 15 million dollars in capital needs. Some of these, which I think we should probably highlight may, because I think it's part of the discussion we need to have and we're having, may actually fall under a potential bond if we move forward with some of the construction. So I guess my question is, you know, where, where does the gap lie, right? So we have report, two reports that say we have $60 million worth of need. Obviously over a longer timeframe, this is a shorter, shorter time duration, but I feel like, I feel like we're missing some stuff where maybe it's just that I'm not seeing the longer projection. Because there's also is more of what I would consider, a lot of this is maintenance capital, right? So a well replacement. It's there, you, you hopefully maintain it for its life and you, and you drop it in. But what it doesn't really reflect is spatial needs, relay outs, 21st century type learning environments, like refitting classrooms. A lot of the things that I think that Jacobs picked up that we're not. And I think that when we're calculating impact fees and other things, we have to look at that as well. So that'd be my only, I appreciate the roll-up, by the way. I talked about that and there's a front cover roll-up of the capital. So that was an inclusion. I appreciate it. It helps summarize some of this, but I'm just bringing that to light is that it, it still seems like we may be a bit light and not really digging deeper into the capital programs. I know that's not going to get resolved tonight, but I think going forward over the next year, we need to start thinking in those ways of not just replacing what's there, thinking about how our learning environments need to evolve. Because just going into Ty Oge or Black Rocker and, and looking at repairing ceiling tiles and everything is great. But as a sub larger problem is that we're not linking our curriculum and our learning spaces to what the world is right now. Does that all make sense?
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense. I think, I mean, part of it is, you know, being optimistic that the bond is going to take care of, of some of these things. We also know that, you know, when we discussed with the school building committee, this could be even the school building committee, working with the school building authority and, you know, the, the citizens of Coventry, this could be a 25, 30-year long-term project. And so I think we also recognize though, that there hasn't been money for capital. And we truly believe that, and I say this all the time, I go into any of our cafeterias and I look at a ceiling. And, you know, if I walked into a restaurant and I looked up at a ceiling and they looked like some of ours, I wouldn't eat there. And yet it's, it's okay for our students and our staff every day. So I, I think we're trying to balance real, realistically, things that we believe, you know, tiles that you see in floors that are worn. And I, I think there's a complacency and almost an attitude like, we're not going to get it. So why should we even ask for it? Where our approach is we're willing to do what we need to do on our part to make this happen. But our children deserve this, the, the future, the youth. So I think we're just trying to be more realistic, but I mean, we could definitely go back and look at the entire report and, and build it out. I guess that's what we're trying to do. Balance before attitude was, you know what, we haven't got, received these, anything. We know we're asking for, you know, budget increases and, you know, we, we kept it pretty basic for things that we felt we need. But when we found out that had, like you said, it impacted the, 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 the impact fees, we, we, we felt we were being a little bit more realistic with this, but we could easily go and break out the report. It would take some time and I don't know if we're going to be, if this is the year to do it, but I think that's, the point's well taken. This isn't all that, you know, this doesn't take care of all of our needs. That's for sure.
Yeah. And I realize it may take the next year to do that, but I think we should move in that direction because take the building bond. Right now I'm having, we're having this discussion, right? You know, what could be off that ticker list of the next 10 to 15 years? We have to look at that. These problems don't go away, right? But we're not really identifying them in our capital report. We're saying, well, we may take them by the, take care of them by this bond. It may not, right? So if we're able to show it as a long-term outland and say, hey, these things come off these land items long-term over the next 20 years, that, that's a benefit, right? We, the problems don't go away. We don't solve them now. They're going to have to be resolved at some point. And I think that's what we, we found with the impact fee is and every department does it. They shoot low, right? Because your, your inclination is to shoot for what you absolutely need, the ceiling tiles that are falling down, right? But when you're, when you really start, you know, we're so used to the buildings, you're in them every day. I mean, I work in a building that the ceiling tiles are falling down and the bathrooms, everything is falling apart. But you get used to it, right? That's normal. That's just what you work in. But when you really take a fresh look at it, the truth is that it's not the most efficient environment for me to be working in, right? I, I'm in my own office. I have one plug. I have computers. I got three monitors. I got, you know, I don't know where to plug things in. I have a cord for the whole drill to the next office because I put in the air conditioner in my window. Typical municipality, right? So, and that's the thing, like, you know, that we're, we're not capturing some of that stuff, I think. And, and so, you know, I think over time, and I talked about creating narrative, the pictures, the storyline, the long-term narrative. How that fits in, I think over the next year would be kind of a smart way to go. That's not to criticize this. This is just constructive input. This is to go over the town. I realize we have to get something in. It's just constructive input going forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Murray, just, uh, I'd just like to follow on that. Is, one of the reasons why we did this was pretty much to talk about what were the, what were the necessities at this point in time? And I, I, your, your points are well taken. But it also addresses why the ride has those 3%, the 2.5%, the 3% that have to be used on an annual basis. And I, I, I think this is more geared towards that as opposed to the Jacobs report. And I absolutely agree from a financial standpoint that we have to start looking at the Jacobs report and how do we put that together and, 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 and couple it to the bond if possible.
No point. My take.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, Mr. Pearson, did you have any questions on this?
Yeah. Um, very good point, but Mr. Murray, and, and thank you, Mr. Sands for, for chiming in. I, I think, I think you're both right. Capital is about M and E. A lot of focus on M in our, our capital needs. Because there's so much M, which is maintenance. There's so much maintenance required right now because we're, you know, haven't received capital for ever. So it would be nice where we can shift gears at some point and have the capital to start thinking more about enhancements. And that's where, you know, some of the bond money will come in. But again, enhancements shouldn't be an afterthought. You know, we need a bond every, every five, 10 years. Uh, enhancement should be part of our, our annual plan also. And by enhancements, Mr. Murray is right. It's about redesigning our, our learning environments, about redesigning our, our building aesthetics. So it's a warm inviting. You know, we talk about the high school and how, you know, I don't know where the front door is by looking at it, other than I know where it is because I've been there. But if someone from out of town comes and looks at the high school, they're going to go, well, where's the front door? Things like that. The analogy I'm going to use here is actually a true story. And this is where, where I hope we never end up. The town I grew up in, you know, the, the high school wasn't that old. I think it was built in the, in the seventies. And by the 2010 or so, the town had been neglecting their capital needs to the point where a wall fell over in the high school and landed on a student, a cinder block wall, injured the student. And at that, that's what it took, unfortunately, for that town to wake up and understand that capital is important. And they tore down the high school and built a new one. And I won't tell you what the price tag was, but it's a beautiful school, beautiful campus. Let's not get there. This town needs to fund its capital. We need to make sure we're taking care of our maintenance part of the capital. We need to start thinking about enhancement part of the capital. So these are investments we can be proud of for generations to come. That's all. Off my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Well taken. Before we move on to the next agenda item, I'm just going to ask the public if they have any questions for the presentation that we just saw.
Doesn't look like we have anyone.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And I think it's safe to say that we can move on to agenda item number seven, which is the presentation of the COVID budget. And not sure who's starting that. I assume.
I'll start it. Yeah, I'll start it. Then I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sands. Mr. Murphy, can you pull that up?
Sure. Just give me one moment.
Yeah, that's fine. My computer's, my, my other screen's frozen, so. Well, while Mr. Murphy's pulling that up, I just want to, again, you know, Mr. Sands, is this, uh, I don't know, is this your second or third week we in?
Well, we're in the third week now. So I, I, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm.
Good. You're a third week. So you're, you're, yeah, no more honeymoon. So.
Nah.
I just want to say thank you very much. I mean, you, you've been working, you know, I mean, not to point out, but Mr. Sands has been here several times till eight o'clock at night. And, you know, I, I'm a philosophy is family first. He has four children. I don't want to disclose too much, but I, I just can't thank you enough for the work that you've put in in, in working with Ms. Mangerelli. And I want to thank her, even though she's not here, she's been coming in every week. Uh, Mr. Sands wouldn't have taken the job. And I bring this up because I want the school committee to know. I want the community to know that, you know, we have, they have an incredible partnership and, you know, we, the support that we have behind the scenes to do this. As Mr. Pearson said, we have these funds that we have to utilize by a certain date. And like we did before, if you remember, I think early on the COVID, you know, we had put a budget together, 3 million to 5 million, and we weren't trying to inflate it. We were trying to say, these are all the things that we think we may have. And obviously we whittled that down and the committee had approved the amount, a number for us to move forward. We're going to be looking for that, that same support tonight. But when we look at the COVID budget, this, these funds, and there's two buckets, there's the SRT2 funds, which is about $2,419,000. We were told, and, and, and you'll see part of that goes to private schools that we will be working with them on as soon as we have access. We should have access to these funds very shortly through what's called a CELI grants. That's how the state will put it. Put a, a spreadsheet, a, a program that we have to go in and articulate how we're going to utilize the funds based on the guidance. And then the Department of Ed will approve it. We're also expecting, I believe, the last meeting we had, we had indicated we didn't know what the state was, what the American recovery program funds were going to be. And those funds are approximately, the, the number that's allocated to Coventry is about $5 million. We don't know, again, what part of that will be given to private schools. We, we've made an estimate. And those funds need to be utilized by September 30, 2023. Now, we can use these funds, one of the, one of the areas is in terms of innovation. I have to remind the, the committee, you know, the public that any savings we've had from previous, you know, when, when school was shut down and transportation, we were hoping to use those for COVID funds in, in our FY21 budget. We ended up using most of those for operations, right? So some districts are getting significant amount of money. We were also level funded. So we need to look at, as Mr. Coward said, we need to look at our programs. Our students need incredible opportunities. They need targeted interventions. You'll see an amount here for the summer program. We, we do have a lot of positions in here we can go through. And strategically, we're not throwing bodies at a problem and say, okay, fix it. You know, we've been working on our, our, our ELA program. Uh, there's a, there's a intervention called structured literacy that our district's been working on. We've been working with, and as you've heard me say before, with the Brown and the Annenberg Institute. And it was called high-density tutoring. The evidence behind that is it's 15 to 20 times more effective than just remedial support that a lot of times schools get involved with. So we plan on user, utilizing these individuals and these additional staff. You know, I believe massive action creates momentum. So, um, but we, we also are going to use it to make sure that we maintain the level of supports and services that we have. The structural deficit part is how we're going to strategically utilize some of these funds where we think it'll offset, again, these are COVID funds where this will offset our general fund. And you'll see some areas in here. One of the areas Mr. Coward talked about was the building subs. We'll use COVID funds, but our belief is not only is it better for students, better for consistency, better for our fill rate. You know, sometimes our fill rate is, you know, is like 60%, which means 40 of the requests aren't being filled. It's, it's better for students. But if we can offset in our general fund, some of the substitute, some of the sublines, then we're creating some, you know, some space in our general fund. You'll see that with the Chromebooks. Mr. Sands will talk a little bit about transportation, how we feel that we can purchase vehicles. That'll help us offset by several hundred thousand dollars our out of district, our statewide transportation line. And that's how we plan on over the next couple of years attacking a structural deficit. So having said that, I want to turn this over to, to, to Mr. Sands. Again, I want to thank him publicly. We've set up our first meeting next Monday, just so you know. Myself, Mr. Sands will be meeting with Mr. Marshon and Ms. Mills, the town manager and the town finance director. So we will start hopefully our weekly meetings, working together to, uh, to address the, the needs of, of not just the Coventry Public Schools, but the school community. So, Mr. Sands, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levis. Uh, thank you very much, School Committee. Do want to say that and this COVID budget is, I, in, in my opinion, a, a great opportunity for the school district to sort of look at data from a skill sets and also from a monetary perspective. And while we're doing this over the next couple of years, let's say this year and next year, this gives the school committee a chance to sort of look at what we can do with a, a, a COVID budget. And as Mr. Coward and Mr. Levis have already talked about, it, it gives us an insight into what the teachers can do with our students and especially getting them back on, on, on par to where they were before this. That's why we're using a lot of this COVID budget to really target these areas. And, and, and the best part about this is that we're going to have a lot of actionable data later down the road. And I think it's really important that everybody look at this, uh, e- especially in the building subs. Because one of the things that happens with building subs is, hey, you, it, it, by having a constant person there all the time, the students are going to be very, they're, they're, they're going to be more acclimated to the people coming in as opposed to having people that just come from outside. So having these permanent building subs, as Mr. Coward and Mr. Levis have talked about, are incredibly important. Uh, I do want to say that all the personnel tables here for the COVID budget have been taken by, by using the step five for teachers and for the SRP rate that, that Ms. Sarah, Ms. Mangerelli has, has already, uh, has already, has already developed. So I just want you to know that all the FTEs here are based off Mrs. Mangerelli's previous steps. Another thing that I want to bring up here on the COVID, uh, the COVID budget is the custodians and the nurses. As Mr. Coward had talked about earlier, the EDOC presentation, yesterday's EDOC presentation, presentation emphasized school cleanliness. And as an essential aspect of keeping schools clear of COVID. Custodians are, are central piece to keeping the schools clean and COVID-free. Custodians will be covered by COVID funds, but are a great example of the school's structural deficit going forward. Because as we all know, if we don't have the custodians there, the cleanliness of the schools is not kept, kept up to date. And as we know, it's incredibly important that the custodians have. And as we know, it's incredibly important that the custodians have states are continue into the local funds. These are not currently involved in 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 the local funds, and it is a good example of the structural deficit that we will be looking at two two years down the road when COVID funds do run out. Floating nurses is also a great example of the school structural deficit and a great use of COVID funds. But once again, we are talking about structural deficit. Add how coverages through agencies create premium pricing that Mr. Levis has already talked about. And the school district will be monitoring the cost and will report back to the school community on final numbers. So in the last two, in the in the last two pieces here, where we're talking about custodians and nurses, I think you'll find that that's something that we we have to have within the schools because it creates, not only does it create, it 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 decreases the amount of cost that the school is going to be using on nurses and also with custodians going forward. If we could move it down a little bit to the next. Okay, so the summer program here, this is something that will be used for our students going forward during the summer. And all the all the costs here are based off of, in in the case of the YMCA, the information comes straight off their website. And we're looking at it from a three week perspective with 120 campers. The rest is that the recreational department is same same would be a hundred dollars for a three week period for 295 campers. And then so forth and so on. The high density, high density tutoring is something that we want to bring into the the YMCA, the recreational department, so that we can create some tutoring at the same time that these students are enjoying their classmates. That particular area was was budgeted at a $34 rate for two, two hours for 30 days. Just so that you get an understanding of the assumptions that were made for the high density tutoring for the 30 staff members while they're at while the students are at the YMCA or Recreation Department. CTE programs, transportation, we I looked at that as basically a one stop. We would we would take this, we would take the students from either the YMCA, the Recreation Department, and and drop them off at one place. So that's how we came to that number of 24,000. The CTE program was also a a it was just a hundred, a $400 increment for three weeks for 50 campers, which would which would include all the CTE personnel that were needed. Now, finally, which is the most important, I think, well, not the most important, because social emotional is incredibly important. But something that we can sort of look at is 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 a structural literacy enrichment and secondary, elementary and secondary educational programs that we plan on on developing for this summer. This was created using the same type, same format for the high density tutoring, but where it was six hours versus the two hours, and it was also on a 30 day basis and $34 an hour.
Can I do you mind if I?
Sure.
Just.
Yes.
So we wanted to I don't know if you can mute, Mr. Sands, for a sec. What we try to do here is we wanted to allocate dollars. These programs were still in development tomorrow morning. I have a meeting with Jeff Smith, the Executive Director of the YMCA. I have a more a meeting afterward after that with Rena Blumenthal and Kathy Pendola for the Rec Center. You know, we're still in progress. We have a meeting tomorrow after that. Mr. Coward, a couple, you know, Mr. Schuckart and Courtney McPolis, we're meeting with the Brown Annenberg Institute around the high density tutoring. So we are still developing these. We wanted to allocate the dollars that we are best thinking right now. And that last program that was talked about, the structural literacy, that's a definitive program that we've been working on. We had a lot of success with it last year in terms of closing the gap for for struggling learners. We have assistance we've used, including STAR, to identify those students. But the exciting part about here is that we 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 want to offer as many opportunities to students as possible. And Mr. Coward has developed a a brief RFP for our educators to look at content, look at standards, and provide learning opportunities for students, small groups of students for two or three weeks. Because we really need all hands on deck to do this. And again, massive action creates momentum. So we've, this is a, you know, we feel this is a realistic amount of money. We may shift dollars certain way, but I think this is the amount of money that we're accounting for. We want the community to know and the school to know that we think this this is going to help us in terms of over a short period of time, because the research isn't isn't research doesn't say you put kids in a summer program for eight weeks, right? What research talks about is like, if we get out in June, late July, early August is the best time to do a lot of this work. So we're going to have to do this strategically. But we think that this this will allow us to really allow our students to be students. That's why the camps. These camps are also going to have STEAM initiatives and and some academic components. But it also allows us to address that academic component to that learning law. So we feel it's the best of both with our with the summer programs. Kind of summarize that. Thank you, Mr. Sands.
Thank you for divining that a little bit more, Mr. Levis. So so to finish this off, we have a materials cost of approximately 10,000. And then to be determined is $100,000, which is an allotment, basically, where where are the are the students going to go? Where's where's the faculty going to go? We don't know at this point, and I think Mr. Levis clearly stated that, is that we're still developing, and we want to make sure that there is some something there in case another area is filled out. So that you'll see that to be determined, and we will report back to the school committee once we have developed that further. Finally, we taught, we've talked about this a lot in 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 the past at school committees, where we were going to use Chromebooks. We were to use COVID money to basically sort of allay a lot of a lot of expense that we used to outlay on a a three year basis. This this way, what we're doing is we're buying everything upfront from Chromebooks ahead of time. And then we're giving this to from to all the six, sixth through 12th grade students. And we're making sure that they have books going forward. This will, this will give us a clear window of about three years before we need to go forward on 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 new Chromebooks. So this this helps us with the structural deficit going forward. But it's also not a, it's 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 also not something, not an expense that that's going to go away anytime soon. So I, we have discussed this in previous in in previous discussions. So and this is what we have worked on, and this is what it's going to cost at this point. So if Jim, if you, Mr. Murphy, if you could go down a little bit. This is where our our discussion right now sort of stops. This is what we need to vote on going up. The 3,690,000 is is what at this point we need to vote on. But do you want me to go forward and sort of explain what we're doing on the rest?
Yeah, I think it's important that one of the things we're talking about, like massive action this summer and giving students opportunities. These will be available to all all students. We we put numbers in there, but there's going to be opportunities for any student that wants to participate. But moving forward again, and more that'll be next week, we need to talk about the structural deficit. We know a percentage of this has to go to the 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 private schools, right? So we put in a money amount that we think is is pretty accurate. But again, we don't have the final number from the Department of Ed, how we're going to, you know, especially the $5 million. We talked a little bit before, and that'll be, you know, in the budget last week, and it'll be brought up again next week, how we can use $230,000 to address some, and this is specifically some HVAC needs. But we'll also be able to get housing aid back on this that we can reinvest in into our schools. Mr. Sands talked about the $813,000 in terms of the structural deficit. And then transportation, one of the things that we're looking at doing is, and again, when we have a plan, and we'll come back to you, but we're looking at purchasing vans, minivans, which are legal for us to utilize. They'll provide a variety of transportation opportunities for our students, especially with the out of district transportation, our S R students, which is, you know, our students that are in foster care and that we are responsible to transport. It can also help us with some of our other, you know, local transports that we have to use, out of state transportation. So not only do we believe we can purchase the vehicles and pay for drivers out of these funds, but we believe that we'll see significant savings in our out of state transportation line. If you remember, this year, it went from like 6,600,000 to they projected over 1.2 million dollars. So this is how we think, and there's other strategies that we have to put forward. But again, this is this is over a week and a half period. But we do believe that we can attack that structural deficit. Without these funds, I don't know what we would do, being level funded, moving forward. But we do have these funds. We are, you know, we don't plan on just utilizing them and spending them to spend them down. And as you can see, even with this, there's still well over a million dollars left if we go forward with every everything. There's still over a million dollars left that we could use strategically. So but Mr. Sands at the next school committee meeting will give a much more in depth discussion around this and in the structural deficit, because I think that's part of this. You know, like we said, with the substitute teachers, we're going to be able to collect data and see, does it actually save us money? We know it's better for kids, but we also have to make sure that it's there's cost saving, because if it's just better for kids, we're not going to be able to sustain it after a year and a half, two years. So there's other things that we put in here strategically. You know, I'll give Mr. Sands a little break, and then he's going to have to, like I said, next week, come back with a lot more information about these these items that we just I just went over. So do you have questions for Mr. Sands? Again, this this the staffing here that we put on this budget are the ones that we're using strategically to target. As you asked, Ms. Pat, know about, you know, like, just in terms of the schedule, but how we're doing at the middle school, but we're using this to target interventions for students that are going to be able to be implemented every single day. You know, the summer program is a summer program, and we're going to throw a lot of teachers using evidence based practice at at targeted needs. But we need something that's going to be there every single day moving forward for at least this year. Because this is this budget is, you know, the the personnel budget is for this year coming forward. So.
Okay, thank you very much. So I guess we'll start with Mr. Florio. Do you have any questions on this COVID budget presentation?
No, Madam Chair, seems like Mr. Levis and Mr. Sands has a good plan and set in motion, and I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mr. Murray.
Where do I start? I do have questions. I think my my first question is, you know, always when I get a budget the week of, and I don't really have a time to synthesize it is, is it immediately, does this does this need require a vote tonight? Do we have these funds in place? And it's not to be a squeaky wheel, but part of my job, or I feel like my job, is to look at things, synthesize the information, and ask questions. And when I honestly work for a living and I get it that week, it's it's difficult. And it's not to throw anybody under the bus, but I'm I guess I don't feel comfortable that I have enough time, you know, I've looked at this, but I I do have questions. I'm probably going to have more, really synthesize it out. So I guess my base question is, does this, what is the expediency to get this done tonight?
I mean, I would I would say that I would ask that we put it back on. I mean, I I have no problem forcing this, but you were a part of, you know, you heard the council's questions too about, you know, I wanted to make sure that we put a budget together. We 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 didn't start working on this. I mean, we started working on it, but this was really pulled together, you know, earlier in the week and late last week, so there hasn't been time. And we didn't get the $5 million. Remember, at the school committee meeting, I said I had no idea. People were throwing around numbers. That night, I would have been forwarded a document that said Coventry, $5 million. And they're supposed to expedite that.
To that point, you know, I had asked to have a roll up of the S R funds, like what's been used today, what, you know, like what's coming in, what the outflow has been today on the different S R funds. And and I know, listen, I know you're busy and all this stuff's fluid. I guess what I'm asking for as a school committee member is a little more time
Yeah.
to vet this out and ask the right questions, knowing that, you know, when I see $100,000 placeholders there, a couple hundred thousand there.
Right.
It's not that it worries me. I just want to get my own head wrapped around it, make sure, because to your point with counsel, we need to be able to also back you and understand the funds, right? We need to know this stuff in and out.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I mean, I I'm fine with that. I I but I, we want to move on. I'm, you know, we're building, we're we're trying to build programs. We're going to do this RFP for our staff. We know we're going to do the high density tutoring. We're going to post anticipated positions. But everything's important. Everything's a priority. And so I want to keep the process moving, but I'm not asking you to vote on something you don't feel comfortable. You know, and 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 in fairness too, like, I'm gonna, you know, Mr. Sands has been here working on, you know, we're we're remember, we're level funded for FY21. We're still dealing with day in and day out needs. Today, we just figured out what it's going to cost for other additional support we need at the elementary school, because we had all of our teaching assistants working in four days. Now they're working five days. So like, we're figuring things out every single day. This is something that, you know, the personnel, I I truly believe that we need, and we've talked about the process in vetting, but to answer your question, you know, pick the time you need. I would ask that bring it back next school committee meeting, and if that's not enough time, you know, well.
I think that's that's plenty of time. I think, you know.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
To vet this. I mean, we're talking big numbers.
Yes.
And then I guess my other question is, and we found we had, so we're not the only districts getting this money, right? And we found this when COVID happened. Everyone ran out and was trying to get subs. We had to increase our sub rate. We couldn't even get the nurses we needed. We couldn't get a lot of the staff we projected. So I guess, you know, what's, and and knowing that these are one year positions likely, right? Because some of the audience is going to fall off. So I mean, is there a game plan? Is there a thought? And if not, I'm just setting the seed of, you know, how do we attract good talent? Because we're going to be pulling from the same talent pool and and in a very short timeframe. And by the way, it's only one year job.
That's that's an excellent question, because the building subs are different. And if you look at their their in the contract, how they function after a certain date, they'll be given like step one. And so we we haven't had issues getting building subs that are there for the year. We have issues with subs. And you're right. I mean, we've hired, and I I don't have a number today, but we've hired 60 additional staff people this year to address COVID. Now, it doesn't mean they're all here. But and they're all a variety of positions. You know, we we know that even the custodians we have here doesn't bring us back to the level we had. That's nine FTEs. But we used to have 12. So we're not even at the level we used to have. So we believe with the building based subs, we'll be successful with that. We're looking at, right now, we have all these additional nurses. We're looking at having two floaters. You know, we talked about something earlier about how that will help us make some covers, but this is something that we think will help support all of our nurses. Again, it's you never know, right? But if we can, the sooner we go out and we can post and secure somebody, because you're right, we are with with other individuals and everybody else, most many districts, like there were two districts, I think, in the state that were level funded, us in Exeter West Greenwich. I could be wrong in that, but I believe. So a lot of pro, a lot of districts are able to do other things maybe with the funds. We're trying to look and step back and say, where are our greatest needs? And then also, though, how can we attack this structural deficit? We have a great opportunity to use these funds strategically, not like we did years ago, for those that were around when we had the IRA funds. You know, we spent it, but, you know, the 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 ramifications or the the out impact was maybe a year and a half, two years. So but yeah, I mean. So, but yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate it, taking the time and your honesty. Like I said, I don't want to, we're not trying to push this through. But I also heard that, you know, it's important for us to have a plan to come forward publicly and, and let the community know, just like we did in the reentry plan, let people know how we plan on attacking this. And, you know, when I look at a middle school that has the, the, you know, the, the interventionist, the lack of staffing that we've had. And, you know, I, I applaud the school committee last year, despite everything going on, you stayed true and said, this is what we need to operate the schools. And, you know, with learning loss, these are the personnel. It looks like a lot of bodies, but this is what we believe we need to keep, to, to create momentum and keep moving forward and also address that structural deficit.
Yeah, I'll just end it with, you know, it's not, it's not that I don't believe anybody. It's not that, I, the reason I ask about the personnel is I know on the subs, we had to bump up the pay rates, right?
Right.
We have to start looking at what other districts are likely to do, which is a lot of what we're likely to do and figure out that strategy as well. Because, you know, if we can't get those people, we're going to need those people, right? So, so I guess it's, that's just setting the seed. I appreciate if we could have some time, Madam Chair, to, to vet this, if others are agreeable, and I'll leave it at that.
Can I just add a little bit to that, Mr. Murray? I know that you wanted to end this, but to a certain extent, we have to act pretty quickly on the Chromebooks just because of lead time on that. We're looking at, we still haven't received the Chromebooks that we ordered way back when. So I want to make sure that we emphasize that. And as far as the, as far as the personnel is concerned, one of the things that we're looking at is by having the building subs as permanent subs, we're, we're hopefully going to leapfrog everybody by having them permanent as, as opposed to on a daily basis. And I think that's how we're going to get ahead of the, of the group is because they're going to be here for 480 days. And we're going to look at that and, and, and see if we're going to have some actual savings in this as opposed to the one day, whatever the amount is. And that's what we're going to be looking at as, as a possible savings and, and also with the floating nurses. Because we're, we're taking out the agency costs by hiring these nurses and their teachers as well. So we're, we're hopefully jumping everybody that's out there looking for these people by saying, hey, you're going to come here and it's going to be permanent. Well, for at least a year. And I, I realize it's only a year contract, but it's better than having, you know, being in an agency and not knowing if you're going to work the next day.
No, that's, that's a good point, and I agree with you. With regard to the Chromebooks, I do have one question, because I, I agree with the Chromebooks. I mean, that's a flat out, that's a no brainer, right?
Yeah.
We know we need them. It's a one-time cost, it fits. So I'm fine if we were to vote on something, if you want to get that going from my standpoint, again.
That would be, in, in fact, Mr. Murphy had, had spoken to me earlier and, you know, prior to this, this conversation and just said that it would be, it's, the sooner we can order the Chromebooks, the better, because there's a, there's more, what are they called, the chips that are involved? There's a great shortage and now carmakers are saying that they're competing for the same chips that would be in for their, for, for automobiles. So Mr. Sands said, the Chromebooks that we ordered that we expected in October still haven't come in. So we feel that it's, and we cannot survive next year without new Chromebooks. We're using six-year-old ACs. So if that's something the committee would do, and I know there's many more members that need to discuss that, but that would be appreciated if you could approve the Chromebooks at least.
Yeah, I know I capitalize a lot of times. So I guess my last question is, and, and looking at these numbers, it's just that we're just, is there float built in? And by that, I mean, I see the number of students. I see some exacting numbers. Do we, I'm assuming some additional units are going to be bought as far as float, right? So I'm assuming it's built into these numbers.
Yeah, they, they are built in. Chip can actually talk to that, but yes, they are built in, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, I did build in a cushion for each grade, I think of percent over the enrollment number.
So as we get ones that get broken and we have to do lenders and the whole bit, that's all built in. Okay. So that's all I have on that. I'm, you know, from my standpoint, I, I agree with the Chromebooks. From day one, I thought it was logical cost, so I don't, not have any problem with that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Pearson.
I don't have any additional questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. I, I think that this budget basically is the best guess. Oh, sorry, my video went off. I think it's kind of like, I would hope that this isn't in stone in the first place. I could be wrong, but first of all, does anybody know when we will in fact get the money? Is there any, any thought that we might not get it like by the summer, for example? So I guess my only question really is, I love the idea of, of trying to support kids during the summer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What happens if we don't get that money this summer?
We have to, we have to get it because they're saying a certain percentage has to be spent on summer programming. So I, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I've said that all along. Why we still, you know, you know, why I've been pressing for the COVID funds from the town was just as a safety net, so we can say we have a balanced budget, right? Because we don't know. I don't think we'll have access to these funds right now, but we will have access to them. And we're told that they're going to expedite. I mean, I've been told they're going to expedite the, the funds. So these are the, some of these are from President Trump, the 2.419, and the five millions from President Biden's Act. And we plan on having access to all these by the summer. So the S R, the, the grant, the Excel grant that is supposed to be any day now, it should be out today. They told us last week, you know, last week, it would be seven days. So we'll be able to populate, just like we did, you know, Mr. Murray had asked for the, you know, the only grant money we have is the 720,000. We, you know, and again, I totally forgot that you had requested that, to be honest with you. We have that grant that we've populated. We can share that. It's, that tells you exactly how we spent that 727,40,000. So that's it, that's all we've had to get through what we've done. And I think, you know, nothing's perfect and we all want this to end. But I think we've done the best job that we can with the, you know, that we can, not even with the resources we've had. We've made it work. So, yeah, I, but I, I, I can't give you a, a, an exact date, but everybody's in the same position. I mean, Providence got 129 million, Warwick has, I don't know, was it 20 some odd million? Princeton, I mean, there's a lot of money out there that districts are expecting to utilize. So I don't think we're, we're wrong to move forward, at least with, you know, we, obviously we can't spend the money that we don't have, but knowing that we have the support of the committee. And the only thing I want to say, Ms. Patno, was in stone, I think the positions, we believe that we do need the positions. I mean, you could come back and say about the subs and things like that, but all the, the instructional positions, the interventionists, I believe that, you know, I'd like to do more. And we still are, we still have other areas to look at, social, emotional, how we can address those maybe strategically outside of just the programs that we plan on running this summer. We have a lot going in our schools, you know? So there's a lot more room for discussion. So anyways.
No, thank you for that. I just brought it up because I, I, I think the plans that have been made make a lot of sense. And I trust all of our administrators and the input that went in to make this. I absolutely agree that we're going to have learning loss. Everybody knows that that's true. And the best way to support kids is instructional time, tutoring, all of that stuff. So I am 100% supportive of all of that. And I am definitely ready, I think, to move on. I would be fine with voting on this whole package tonight, but I understand Mr. Murray's concern. And so are we, are we okay with moving forward with at least the Chromebook purchase? Because I do believe that is one thing I am worried about, that we're going to actually get them here in time. And just because I know we already have a, a bunch out there and they haven't come in. I'm not sure how many was in that original purchase. But certainly, we will, we will be in very bad shape if we don't get some Chromebooks into this town. So I'm very hopeful for that. And so the sooner we can get that order in, the better, I would think. So is, does that sound like a good plan for everyone?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I agree with you. I, I would like to vote on the whole, the whole plan this evening.
Yeah, I think, I think one week, it's not, it's not going to be a big deal, but the Chromebooks, I definitely think we need.
I agree with you. So do you want me to make a motion for the Chromebook?
Yes, that would be great. That would be great, Mr. Florio.
I make a motion that we purchase Chromebooks out of the American Recovery Plan, A R P funds. And that's it. I would.
Do we have to put a price? I think it's 959-861. Is that true?
Yes.
950, 959-861.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Thank you. And before we call for the vote, I'm just going to ask the attendees in the public if anyone has any question or comment about this particular vote.
I don't see anyone, Madam Chair.
I don't see any either, Mr. Murphy. So could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Catherine Patnun?
Yes.
David Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to citizens' comments. Do we have any comments from the citizens gathered?
No, oh, we actually have.
We have one hand.
Okay, Kim S., if you could just state your name now, mute your microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Wonderful. Last time I did it from my phone, no one could hear me. Kimberly Shockley in 12 Kingswood Drive. I hope it's okay that I'm asking questions tonight.
Absolutely.
But I had a couple of questions on just some of the budgeted items. And I'm not sure if we can go back to the page about the camps this summer, the, the summer of learning.
Sure.
I do think the Chromebooks are a brilliant way to spend the COVID money, by the way, as a citizen.
Do we need Jim Murphy to pull up that page?
Yeah, so I'll just start asking my question while he's doing that. So for the YMCA, did you say Kent County YMCA or are you including?
Westwood, Wes, I probably did, but it's Westwood Y.
Oh, great, okay.
I, I.
Perfect, just as a parent.
Yeah, I, it was a faux pas on me.
No problem, it could have just been how I was listening to it as well.
Me.
So with, and I'm sorry, I was looking for the page on, on the camps and that sort of thing. So it's no longer necessary. So did you say something, so the transportation is to bring kids to and from Westwood and the rec camp?
So we're looking at, I mean, we're, we're looking at maybe a depot stop where parents could drop off instead of having to drive all the way to Camp Westwood. They could go to, you know, we'd have to identify a central location or maybe two, two depot stops. You know, and, and just to support, some parents like to drive, just like at our schools, we offer transportation, but a lot of parents still like to drive their kids, pick them up, drop them off. So to help assist in that, we wanted to look at doing a depot stops if possible.
So you're going to be doing it at the camps, like?
We would, we would be providing transportation from, say, give an example, what's a job lot parking lot? We would transport students from there to camp and then at the end of the day, back from the camp to job lot parking lot.
Oh, okay, that makes so much more sense. I thought you had meant you were going to take them during the day and I was thinking that maybe those camps.
No, no.
Nope, perfect. So sorry, I just had misunderstood. I thought it was going to be part of their day.
No, and that's our plan. So we've tried to, you know, Mr. Sands did a fantastic job. I would have thrown in a ballpark number based on my preliminary conversations and, and recognizing that, you know, like, like, you know, Mr. Murray said, a hundred thousand dollars to be determined. You know, we need to do a better job. But as we were discussing this, we thought about all these other possibilities and we added that, that money there. But yeah, the, the transportation will be, that's our thinking right now of depot stops to help families.
And how would people sign up for this? Or is this part of what you're still trying to learn? Getting kids to actually do it?
Right, I'm meeting tomorrow with, we're meeting tomorrow. I have a meeting at nine or 10 with Mr. Smith. And then that, right after that, I have a meeting with the rec, Raina Blumenthal and Kathy Pendola from, you know, DHS, because we want to talk about that program and they have experience running it. So there's still a lot to figure out. The, the budget part for us is really allocating, so the community sees that we're allocating funds towards this. And, but we're still, right, like I said, we've been meeting every week and discussing it, so.
Okay. So just really curious, kind of as a parent on that one. And I also was wondering, as far as the subs, would, would they be employees of the school? Like they would work for just Coventry, they would get healthcare as Coventry? So would, would we attract people with that? Because if they're not going to get a job with Coventry.
But so, so a lot of our.
Wondering.
A lot of our teachers, and I don't want to, I, you know, I don't have, I have going on my sixth year here. So I don't want to pretend that I have the greatest history, but I've been in education for 35 years. And my experience is that a lot of times substitute teachers, they have an experience, they know the school, and they get hired where openings are. We all know that we have an aging stock.
Yeah.
You know, in the next two or three years, it's really just about pension. Unfortunately, that we have many people that would retire, but they can't afford to retire. But I think you're going to see in the next 50 years.
I like to think it's healthcare, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, it is, it is, it is healthcare, but some people have worked for a lot of years, but they can't, they can't retire. Till say they can't access their pension till they're 60 too. And the point is, is that this gives people, not only do they get to experience and have the support, when you're a long-term sub, you have the support of your colleagues. You know, you may be working in a department and it gives them the opportunity to get to know the administration, the school, the students. So I think when it comes to hiring, it gives them an advantage to hiring for a position. So that's been my experience.
But just in Coventry.
No, I can add to that actually, because, you know, when I, when I was a principal, we had subs and we had building subs. And, and one of the carrots to get people into Coventry is if we could get them as much work as possible, even if they didn't land with us, it would still be a resume builder, right? If they spent an entire year in one building in one district, working with one population of kids, they would, that would end up becoming a really solid piece on their resume. They'd probably get a letter of recommendation and it would help them whether they stayed with us or weren't someplace else. Often they do stay with us. They, they, you know, a job gets open, they apply, and if they're a solid, you know, you know, candidate, they may get the job. But if they don't, they could easily end up in another district. So I know if you're a day-to-day sub bouncing from one district to another, it, it doesn't, it doesn't sit as well on a resume as if you had spent all your time in one place, because that shows whoever's looking to hire you that you had some sort of value to that community.
Right.
All right, no, thank you. I appreciate your answers to the questions. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mrs. Shockley. Look, do we still have another hand up? Oh, we've got a couple now.
Okay, Joshua, you're up next. If you could just state your full name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Josh Clements, Tangent Entry Farm Drive. Appreciate the overview on the summer camp. Is that something, it's, it's mentioned it's been for those who are lagging behind or need additional help? Is that targeted specific students then? And there'll be an effort to recruit them for that? Or would it be open, open to enrollment as, you know, I think as Mrs. Shockley was just asking how to enroll students in it?
Right, so the camps, to, to answer your question, so part of the camp experience is we want students, kids to be kids, right? They have a summer program. So the whole camp experience isn't about just closing the academic gap. It's also about social, emotional wellbeing of students, you know, and families. Think about it, if you know your child's going to camp, say three weeks of camp, having fun with, interacting with peers, but it also brings some normalcy to you, right? And so we think that this is a real benefit to our families. And so we think that this is a real benefit to our families. The, the students that will be chosen for targeted um, interventions in reading or in math or in writing. That'll, those students will be identified. So they may be campers at either the Y or the rec center. But we're working with them to look at, how can we provide some, some of this targeted evidence-based tutoring? Um, to, to these students. So there may be an hour where other students are doing some other academic activities. We're going to look at no more than two or three students with an educator. Um, for no longer than maybe an hour, an hour and a half. So. You know, that, that's how we'll identify those students separately. But um, we're looking at our process. I'm, you know, again, my next meeting is tomorrow. Um, the camps only have so many spots available. So we want to support that um, as much as we can. So. I don't have that process yet, just for the regular campers. And I know some families have already registered for different programs. Um, so we will be.
I guess that's where I'm, I'm, I'm heading, is like the challenges and logistics to figure that out in, you know, the couple of months before June. And make sure we get, catch the right students. But that's fine. Thank you for the explanation. I guess the next question comment I had is on the, the Chromebooks, right? So I, I think it's a great idea. We're purchasing them. They're now becoming part of our capital expense on an annual basis, I would understand. And as Mr. Pearson alluded to, right, we don't do a good job of refreshing that. But now we're building in a fixed cost to have to buy X number of Chromebooks every year. Uh, would that be part of maintenance of effort going forward and we'd have less money to replace, um, we'll say the, the kitchen ceiling tiles?
So just quickly on that, um, we, we purchased, we lease Chromebooks typically. Uh, we, we, we uh, refresh them. We, the Chromebooks have a life of about. Um, three years. Uh, we've been getting much more out of them, uh, unfortunately, because we're at a point now where they. You know, we, we can't survive much longer with some of the Chromebooks we have. Um, so they're part of doing business. What we're hoping to do with this is take those, those expenses out for the next at least three years. Um, and uh, you, you know, utilize those funds to, to attack this structural deficit that we have. So. Um. For the next three years, we'll be able to utilize the funds that would have been budgeted to, to, you know, we talked about positions that we have, that we need to find ways. If we choose to move forward with these positions, um, we, we have to move them to the general fund. So. It's part of an overall, uh, larger strategy. Um, but you're absolutely right, you know, but the Chromebooks or, or. Devices are something that's going to be part of our educational system moving forward, no matter what. So. You know, we, we have a lot of work to do to figure out how do we attack that structural deficit, but these funds give us an opportunity to be creative with that. But you're right, at the end of the day, we're still going to need to continue to purchase these type devices after these federal dollars are gone.
Certainly appreciate the creativity of look at ways to get the structural deficit though. Uh, great work. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Clements. Mr. Coward, you had your hand up. Did you want to comment on something?
I'll be brief. I, I, I was just going to add in uh, for anybody um, who else is also thinking about what Mr. Clements brought up. And Mrs. Shockley about the YMCA is that, or the rec department, that's only one component of a comprehensive plan. We're taking sort of a layered approach. You know, some kids are going to go to the Y, so we're hoping to be able to support them while they're there. Other kids may be going to the rec center. We want to be able to support them when they're there. Some kids don't go to either. And maybe they opt into one of the enrichment opportunities we're offering. Maybe some kids go to a structured literacy program that we're running out of our school. Maybe some kids are getting a, a, a very targeted uh, elementary math. Uh, you know, s- summer experience. So we're trying to cast sort of a big net to capture as many kids as we possibly can. So I don't want people to walk away from the meeting thinking this is just about the Y or just about the rec department. I, that's a very creative approach to get more kids, but it's really more comprehensive. And we'll be able to speak more about it once we build it out, but it's, it's um, not just those two components.
So one example is a C T that we didn't really talk much about, but, but Ms. Ferguson and myself have met and we're looking at. Doing some type of exploratory programs for like grades five and six and then breaking up seven and eight. And um. You know, having maybe a, a three-day-a-week for a two or three-week program. And um. You know, so that way we start to get students to explore not only activity-based programming, but also. You know, potential interests around vocation, but making it fun, um, but also addressing social, emotional. So there's a lot. That we've discussed. And you're right, we have a lot to do in a few short months, but again, we just found out. You know, we could, a week and a half ago about, you know, when we could. You know, the, the, the amount of funds and when we thought we actually see the funds. So. It's exciting. It's, it's a better, you know, it's a good position to be in at least, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Levis and Mr. Coward. Um, looks like we still have a hand up there, Mr. Murphy.
Yes. Okay, Andrea, you're up next. If you could just state your name and address for the record and unmute your microphone.
Sure. It's Andrea Pederuto. I'm at two thirty-four Chaplin Drive. And um, I'm going to touch upon a couple of things that Mr. Coward and Mrs. Patino said. You wanted to have kids to have more time with an instructor. It's very important. And also, Mr. Sands said the social and emotional wellbeing is also very important. Now, I have um, a- and it's not regarding the budget per se, but it's regarding some of the guidelines. That have been put forward. Um, actually, and I'm, it's regarding quarantine guidelines. Now, I know that I was too late to get in under this agenda, so theoretically my. Um. What I'm going to speak of is just uh, for your own personal information. Of the problems that parents are having under the quarantine guidelines that were set forward. Uh, I have paperwork on one eight, two thousand twenty-one. There is a fourteen-day guideline. Quarantine that is um, adopted by the Coventry School District, and I understand that. But when you have a positive uh, patient, I'm sorry, I'm a nurse, so I, I will say patient, I'm sorry, I meant student. Um, that student is followed in the school system, um, while they are. Uh, on the grounds and they are considered um, contagious. So they follow the, the nursing. Um, the nurses in the community, uh, in the school system will follow that patient. And they will follow minute to minute to minute. Now, that is very important. Now, when it comes down to the quarantine guidelines, where you have set a fourteen-day quarantine. Your fourteen-day quarantine student should also be looked at minute by minute. So if they're um. Uh. If they're, if they were exposed to a particular student um, in the morning before school starts, then their quarantine guidance should end. At that point, it should, it should go fourteen days. And that's twenty-four hours a day, which equals three hundred and thirty-six hours. Now, if you go past that point, you're actually taking away learning time, instructor time, teaching time with that student. And you're also taking uh, possibly extra, extracurricular. Um, activities away from these kids. So I know that um, a- and I've been schooled very quickly for the past two days. Speaking to Reipen, Department of Health, um, Department of Education. I'm pretty sure that um. Everybody knows my name in every single department in, in most of the um, aforementioned depart- uh. Places throughout Rhode Island, um, that deal with our, our kids and our students. So um. I know that um, Mr. Levis, we've talked at length. Um, I've talked to the um, principal at length. I was not able to put in an appeal. In the proper amount of time, because I didn't know that it was forty-eight hours and, you know, from paying for medical, I, I, that's not my forte. So um, I think that that needs to be looked at. You need to change your um, guidelines, your quarantine guidelines to. Um, affect that student. So I have two kids that are up in the morning tomorrow. Um, I really want them to be able to have the opportunity to learn, but because of your uh, quarantine. Uh, you're not following it to the T, then my kids are missing out, especially my senior, who also missed. His senior game on Saturday, and he has yet to miss. Another full day of in-person learning and his game tomorrow night. And it all, and all it really takes is um, look at it. With common sense and say, hey, you know what? Fourteen days is three hundred and thirty-six hours. Do the math. It's pretty simple. And that's what I have to say. And I guess once the um. I, I tried to get on the, the, the agenda today and I was. Uh, offered by Mr. Levis to come to this meeting next week, but it will be, it will be too late. And my kids have already, will have missed um, another day and another game.
Um, thank you. Thank you for your comments, Andrea. Um, this has been a very tough time for all of us, as, as I, I don't have to tell anybody. And least of all, parents, teachers, administrators, um, people in our community. Um, but. That's all I can really say. So thank you for your comments. Um, very appreciated. Um, any other?
May I say something on that topic?
I'm sure, yeah.
I just want to, you know, for the people listening too, I know it's hard. My own daughter's been out and, and it's extremely hard because she doesn't get that interaction. But there is not a day that goes by, just so people don't understand that, we on the committee don't get an email probably over the past year. Most days, we get an email saying, kids are out, a teacher's out, three kids are out, four kids are out. These are interactions that they're having. So this is happening. Kids are coming back from vacation. Kids are coming back from interactions. And, and pa- either passing it on there or elsewhere or through other activities. So. Um, you know, whether it's seven days, fourteen days, calculating to the hour, I think. From my standpoint, and I did get an email. Um, today, and I apologize, I didn't get to, to respond, although I don't think there was much I could respond for, respond to. From Andrea, is that, you know, we have to trust the administration, Department of Health, this conflicting guidance, everything else, but we have to do it right for our school district. So we put a lot of trust in the administrations and to look at everything with the school nurses and make that decision. So. You know, I certainly look into it, because this, you know, this was directed to me. I'm assuming it's in my district, but. Um, I also have to give deference as a school committee member to the boots-on-the-ground people who are doing the best they can. To, to make this work in a very tough scenario. And knowing that we're going to be getting the majority of students back in classrooms very, very soon. But I do empathize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Looks like we have another comment. Um.
Yes, this is Andrea again. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just need to unmute your microphone again.
It's my son.
Um, so what we're trying to get at a point is, I was exposed thirteen days ago today at seven twenty in this morning. My quarantine should be over at seven P M. Tomorrow, but the school has decided to. Basically put the quarantine to fifteen days to midnight tomorrow. So the question was, may I go back to school at seven twenty P M. or seven twenty A M. tomorrow? And I just had another COVID test today and I tested negative.
Um, we understand that you're asking for something, but that, that, just because we have citizens' comments at the end of our meeting. We cannot decide on any issue. You can comment, but you cannot ask a question and have us make a decision. Um, the only thing left for your family and yourself is to come before the school committee next week. Um, per open meetings, we can't all of a sudden decide right now as a school committee to let you go to school tomorrow. Um, and we have to trust, like Mr. Murray said, the administration and the rules that are in place right now. So to answer your question, we can't, we can't give you an answer. Um, because it's, it's against open meetings. And like I said, we have citizens' comments. You can bring up any subject and make a comment. And we can sort of respond, but we're not supposed to make any kind of decisions during citizens' comments when agenda items are not on our agenda. So we allow the public to speak, but unfortunately, we can't act. So um. I'm sure Mr. Levis um, can reach out to you and your family. Um, if in fact you want to appeal this decision that was made. Um, to us next week. And I understand this is a timely thing and it may not be worth it for you to come and appeal. Um, but that being said, we, we can't, we can't give you an answer. So I'm sorry, but. Our hands are tied. Um, I don't see any more comments out there, Mr. Murphy. Is that true?
Looks like that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, then we can move to a, agenda item number nine, which is the scheduling of the next meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next virtual meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Thursday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M.
I second the motion.
Could we have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Martin?
Catherine Patino.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four to zero. And is there a motion to adjourn? I have eight forty.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the meeting be adjourned at eight forty P M.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And we can just have a, a hand vote. But this last one, looks like we've got four um, yays. So motion carries four to zero. And we are adjourned. Thank you all for your attention and have a good rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ten o'clock Saturday, Dunkin' Donuts, right?
Uh, yes.
That's right.